It is past seven o'clock. By just a couple minutes, so I am going to call the meeting to order and this is the regular city council meeting for the City of Minnetrista for June 17th. I'm going to ask first order of businesses that you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everybody that's here this evening and also later on watching on YouTube. First, just a friendly reminder if you have cell phones or electronic devices, please turn them on silent or airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, I will start out with introductions. I'm going to start on that end this evening. We have first sitting here, we have our Director of Administration Cassandra Tabor and then our City Clerk Chris Lindquist. And then at the podium here, at the Diaz here, we have our City Engineer Allison Fausky with WSB. And then we have council members Shannon Bruce, John Chomperlin, Mike Molitor, and Pam Mortenson. And I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the Mayor. And then to my right, we have our City Administrator Mike Barone, our Finance Director Brian Grimm, our Community Development Director David Abel. And then next to David, we have our City Attorney Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, last but not least, we have Chief Paul Falls. And also in our audience that just came back in, our Public Works Director Gary Peters, Superintendent Gary Peters. So with that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? If none, then although, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. This evening, we don't have any special presentations, so we'll move on to persons to be heard. We have one gentleman signed up, Jim Reinholdts. Mr. Reinholdts, you can come to the podium. You need to state your name and address for the record, and you'll have about three minutes to address the council on an issue that is important.
Thank you, Mayor Whelan. My name is Jim Reinholdts. I live on at 2950 Northview Drive. If you don't know where that is, you could probably, I could probably hear you sometimes if you're being loud over here. It's as north view as the next road up west off 110. You go down towards Whale Tail. It came up, I noticed during the internet, this workshop that you had, and that's why I'm here. I'm here to speak to the council that, the topic the council's work session was on earlier tonight, high-speed internet. Mayor Whelan, I'd like to thank you personally for holding a workshop on this issue. It is an important issue that I think has been ignored in Minnetrista for too long. I hope this is the beginning to making progress in bringing high-speed internet access to all Minnetrista residents. There's, as Cassandra said, this, the city took over the contract from the Cable Commission, I believe in 2014. And I don't think any of you were here at that time on the council. The stated reason the council did that was to increase access to the residents of Minnetrista. They thought the commission was not doing that. There has been little success in meeting that goal. I believe much of that less of success frankly, was due to the failure of MediaCom to abide by your franchise agreement. In the spring of 2015, after that agreement was signed, I requested service from MediaCom. They refused. They stated they were not obligated to provide me service under the terms of the agreement. I disagreed with the justification they gave me. They shot back at me that, well, if everybody on the road signed up for it, we'll do it. I offered up to them that I'm not your sales department, and there's nothing in the franchise agreement that refers to return on investment. There's a density agreement. They, and they, so they brought, they stepped back from that. Then what they offered up was, yeah, the cable run has to go up and down the road, it's up and downright as well. That's a definition of cable line that they decided to, to use that isn't standard in the industry, I would guess. When I then responded back to them, they decided to ghost me. I did not hear from them, they did not respond. At that time, I sent a letter to Bill Jensen, the Regional Vice President, I believed, on in Ootana. I never did receive a response to a written registered letter from MediaCom. I kind of got busy at work, got sick of brashing my head against the wall, decided to let it go. But I retired about a year ago. I have a lot more time on my hands now. And I decided once again that I would renew my effort to get service from MediaCom. On May 10th, May 22nd, I sent them an email asking them to reconsider, provided more information. As you're aware, there's been new homes added on Northview Drive. The rationale that they had given me before, if you add one more home into it, it meets the 15 miles density. I have not gotten a response from MediaCom to my May 10th or May 22nd emails. I then contacted Ms. Tabor, and I appreciate her and thank her for her work in getting their, in hopefully getting their response from MediaCom. I think that will be forthcoming. Hopefully, they will follow the agreement and provide me with access. I would point out to you though, I have read that agreement maybe more than I really wanted to. There are numerous parts of that agreement, MediaCom is in violation. They, they show on there that they have an extension of service maps.
Mr. Reinholdts, I'm sorry, you have three minutes, have gone over a little bit, so, okay.
Just 50 seconds, 50, or five, 30 seconds more.
Okay.
And I, and I can send this to you. They've promised to bring service to parts of Minnetrista, they haven't brought it to. There's maps in there that said deadlines, January of 99, 19 of 2019, they were brought that some, they haven't done it. There's been no consequences. I would recommend that the city needs to be tougher with MediaCom. They would respond. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, we'll continue to work on it, but, yep. Okay. No one else has signed up under persons to be heard, so we will move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items you wish to remove?
I'd like to take off C, claims.
Approve claims, okay.
And I'd like, I'd like to take off F.
Approve revised street standard detail plates, okay? So that would remain then. Number A, approve the work session meeting minutes from June 3rd. B, approve our regular meeting minutes from June 3rd. D, approve our step increase for Public Works Maintenance Worker Mark Klein. And E, approve the 2019 arbitrage services agreement. Is there a motion to approve A, B, D, and E?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Chomperlin made that motion, and Ms. Mortenson seconded that. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll take up C first, claims.
Thank you. On page 14 of our packet, the check detail register, the second item down is the City of Mound, the fire contract, and the bond principal, which is $18,000. On that bond principal is going to be going away, I understand, year after next.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to point that out, that that's the quarterly debt payment, which is going to be about $64,000 is what we have been spending in the past. And I, it-
I don't think it's next year.
I think it's 2021.
I think it's 2021 or '22.
I think it's 2021.
Yeah, right.
Yep. So $64,000 is going to be going away, and I, I suggest it might be an opportunity to talk as a council about what we're going to do with that $64,000 that annually is going to be not being paid anymore.
Okay.
So I-
Well, I don't think that we-
Would just like to make a request to put that on the agenda for either a work session-
Well, I think that should come up during our budget discussion, and it probably would have to come up during our budget discussion when, and the year in which it comes off, because it's premature for 2020, and I don't know if it's '21 or '22. We'll check into that, but that's when we would discuss that.
But I just wanted to keep it in mind and whether council members minds too, that that's something that's going to be part of our budget discussions.
Okay. All right, any other questions regarding the claims?
Yes, I do. Just a minor item, there's a expenditure in here for a couple of trees in Lisle Park. Could we have that taken out of the tree fund, not the general fund?
Do you know where that is, on what page?
It was made to Home Depot. It's probably page 15.
I think I saw that too.
Yeah, 15. It's $100 bucks, but just to be consistent, it'd be nice to, it's 101, spot 96.
Yeah, that's fine, we can make that change there.
Okay. Then there's another, two payments in here for some SCADA antennas. Gary, those aren't for water treatment plants, are they?
What's that, I'm sorry?
The SCADA antennas that are being replaced?
That was for the main line antenna here, they snapped off, there's real high wind coming in.
Okay.
To replace the whole antenna line coming in to the hill.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure it wasn't for the water treatment plants and so, sorry.
Well, it's all tied in as well.
Right, I just meant-
But it's the one here that was, that came down.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the claims as presented?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Molitor and seconded by Ms. Bruce to approve the claims as presented. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to the revised street standard detail plates. Mr. Molitor?
Yes, first of all, thanks to the staff for getting that revised. The question I had is based on the conversation we had last time at the work session. I was, the way the standard has been written now is a two-inch base, I believe, with a two-and-a-half wear course on top. I kind of thought it was supposed to be the other way around, where we're trying to get to a thicker base and a, the difference being less on the, on the wear course.
And it was two-inch on the wear course.
We have two-and-a-half inches on the base course and two inches on the wear course.
Okay, isn't standard, the standard wear course now currently in one and a half? Where do we, do we put that extra on the base? I just want to make sure we're getting it on the base.
We put it, the current section is two inches of base and an inch and a half of wear, so we increased both by a half inch.
Okay. Does that, I think the, when Lee was talking about this, the whole point was to build a stronger base so that we wouldn't have to redo streets as much. So I was kind of under the assumption we'd have all that increase going to the base and not the wear course.
I'd have to check with Lee to verify where, what he was coming from. Typically, when you measure the strength of the street, it's by a granular equivalency and, and I'm not, I'm not aware that there's a difference between the base course and the wear course. If the council would like to, to hold off until I can get that answer, we could certainly do that. And I bring this back to you in a month so I can answer that question as far as, but I don't believe that there was a difference in the strength between the base course and the wear course.
I thought it was a two-inch wear course that Lee was talking about. Mr. Gustafson?
Correct. Well, I'd have to take a look back at his notes as far as what his section was, but he was looking at, my recollection is he was looking at the pavement thickness in its entirety, not breaking it down between the base and the wear course.
That's the way I interpret it.
That could be, yeah.
And I think he was using the word base as the overall total number of inches. That's, I know what you're saying, because there's a year apart roughly between the base course and the wear course.
Right. I think it matters from going forward when we start asking people, asking, requesting for overlays, as to how much we asking for a wear course. Are we now asking for a two-inch wear course, or are we asking for inch and a half?
Yeah, I understand the question, it's a good question.
So I just, like, obviously, I'm in support of moving it in this direction, I just want to make sure we get the specs right, that we're getting the objectives.
Well, and that we understand it as well.
Right.
Okay. So we'll, we'll bring that back then. It'll be July 15th, I think, is our next council meeting, so, is that okay? All right?
Perfect, thank you.
All right. All right. So next, we're going to move on to our public hearings. We do have a public hearing regarding ordinance number 455, which is amend, amendment of Jennings Bay Villas PUD. So what I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to David first.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Staff was preparing to present the final plat of Jennings Bay Villas to you at this meeting this evening. And in doing so, we went ahead and published a public hearing notice regarding the rezoning of 1035 County Road 19 to PUD. The purpose of the ordinance is to revise exhibits to reflect the 13 lots, which is a reduction from the pre-plat, you may recall was 14 lots. The council did discuss this with the developer at your February 2018 work session. The developer was given the okay to go ahead and proceed to final plat with 13 lots. And so that's ultimately what this, this ordinance is doing, where we're changing out the exhibits to go from the 14 to 13. And what we'd want to do is do that in conjunction with the final plat review of the council. As I said, unfortunately, we didn't get all the items to us in time to make this packet. So what we'd be looking to do this evening to avoid publishing another notice is the council could open the public hearing and just continue this, this hearing to the July 15th meeting. I think that is adequate enough time for us to bring the full final plat package back to you, and where we can continue then on with the, the public hearing. Take any comment tonight if there is anyone here. And then also at the July 15th meeting, take, take comment, close the hearing, and we'll proceed within the final plat application. So if it's the council's pleasure, that would be the recommendation this evening.
All right, any questions of Mr. Abel? So since it was published and it is on our agenda, I will open the public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing for rezoning 1035 County Road 19 to amending the PUD and repealing ordinance 449. So with that, I don't think anybody's here this evening for that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to continue the public hearing to our July 15th meeting. If we don't have all the information and we need to continue it further, we'll do it, we'll do so at that time, but we'll plan on July 15th right now. You're all in favor of that? All right. So, any other questions of staff regarding this issue?
Need a motion.
I'm sorry?
You can have a motion.
Two, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. So I do need a motion to continue the public hearing to the July 15th meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Chomperlin to continue the public hearing for the amended PUD for 1035 County Road 19. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So now we'll move on to our business items. So our first business item is a PUD amendment for Red Oak. Ms. Abel?
Yes, thanks again, Madam Mayor, members of council. So US Home Corporation is requesting an amendment to the PUD for the development known as Red Oak. The amendment would allow for decks to encroach up to five feet into the rear yard setback. The current setback is a 20-foot rear yard, so they're asking to go to 25 feet. It would also allow for an increase in the impervious surface, the lot coverage, for just decks, to go up to 50%, whereas the original PUD allowed for a 45% maximum pervious hardcover surface for the lots. This issue was discovered through a deck permit on one of the homes within the development. It was also noted that this situation is likely to impact multiple properties within the development. And so because of that, we recommended to that homeowner to go work with the builder, US Home Corporation, to address the topic more globally and not just on a lot-by-lot basis. As noted in your staff report, City Code Section 505.45 subdivision 11A does allow for administrative amendments to planned unit developments. There's criteria listed, it does fall under criteria which would qualify for administrative amendment. But given the history of the development, it seemed more appropriate for the council to review the request. There are more than one lots, there's a total of nine lots actually, so we thought we would bring this to council and not, not have staff administratively look at that. As I said, the applicant has outlined that there are nine lots that need the relief. Five lots need the relief from the rear yard and impervious coverage. And then there are four lots that just need the rear yard setback relief. If the council will recall, there was a total of 59 lots within the development that were approved with the Red Oak PUD. So with that, can stand for questions. We do have representatives from US Home Corporation in the audience, you have questions for them. As I said, we do have one building permit for a deck in, from a, from a resident, and so they're of course paying close attention, trying to make sure that they, they can build their deck in a, in a timely fashion. And it sounds like there's another one that's considering building one as well, so those, those things are out there as well, so.
Do you know which other one it is? So which, which are the two that are, which is the one that has a permit request in at this time?
The, the address that's listed in your staff report, 4890 Red Oak Lane-
Okay.
-is the one that is, has submitted and where it was discovered.
And then which one is-
I don't know the address of the one, there's, they've called and inquired, they're working with the same deck builder.
Oh, okay. Okay. Does council have any questions of staff? Otherwise, I'm going to let the applicant come forward and make some comments.
So administratively, this doesn't go through the planning commission?
Well, no, as I said, administratively means that staff could, could make this decision.
Okay. But if this had been a, just one, one, or not in a PUD, but just a homeowner that wanted to put a deck on the back, that would, needed a variance, it would have went through planning, right?
Correct. Correct. Because, because it was a rezoned to a planned unit development that allowed for deviations from, from our standard setbacks. Our ordinance goes on to further say if, if certain situations or scenarios come up in the future and you need to deviate from those PUD standards, you, you can do that. There's different standards and different processes to allow for that. This technically could be done administratively by, by staff, but given, like I said, the history of the development, the number of lots, it wasn't certainly anything I was going to put my stamp on, so.
Okay, thank you.
So David, what are the setbacks generally, if you will, in a PUD for-
Sure, and so the, the biggest PUD, I guess you could compare this to would be Woodland Cove. We do allow for the rear yard setbacks of 25 feet in, in Woodland Cove, that'd be the-
20 feet.
Uh, 20, correct.
Okay.
And outside of a PUD, then, in the standard residential, what is the rear yard setback?
Um, well, it'd be 20.
So 20 feet is the standard setback for just a R2?
R1.
R1?
Yep.
Okay, why was this 25? What was, do you know what the rationale was at the time?
I don't.
Okay. Okay. It's interesting. And what, in Woodland Cove, you said, is 20? What is Woodland Cove? Do you know?
Um, it's 20.
25.
25 for decks, correct, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. 20 for decks and 25 for, okay. All right, any other questions of staff? Otherwise, I know the applicant is here this evening, if you would like to come forward and make some comments, address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Whelan, members of city council. My name's Mark Sonstergard, I'm with Unar or US Home Corporation. I was also with Ryland Homes back when this site was transferred from the original developer to a national home builder for building it. So I was involved in the, wasn't involved in the PUD part and the approvals, but I have been involved in the actual building of the neighborhood. Just a quick recap, it is, Red Oak is a 59 lots, single family. Just a cap on where we are today, 51 lots we've either built on, there's a building permit out on it, we're actively building. Out of those 51, 50, or 49 are sold. Many of them are closed. So, you know, to kind of put this in perspective, because the approvals are back in 2014, 15, we've been pretty much 10 homes a year, so slow and steady has been kind of the pace out there, but we've stuck with it and interested in making sure that community gets built out. So we have eight more remaining to permit. Price range has been pretty close to where we anticipated, and we, we do have a couple in the mid-400s, but most of the homes have been selling in the mid or lower 500,000s. We got a couple in 600,000s. So market-wise, it is kind of where we expected the homes to be. As Mr. Abel mentioned, as we started this community and as we've built through this community, we did design our homes and our driveways and everything to meet the impervious surface requirements and all the setbacks. We did, early on, identify approximately three lots that we may have an issue like this on, and speaking with staff at that time, we were looking at maybe just do that with staff administratively for some setback relief. That's when we were anticipating there'd be only maybe about three lots to work on. Now, as today, as we've developed the site and built through it, and actually we're, right now, we're putting together the remaining lots, we're planning to build specs and just build through that community, so we're done building. This year, we, we did find and look, and we, we have discovered, looking at every survey, we've looked, there's six lots out there that have homes on them or that we're in the process of building them, that we do have, could use a relief on the rear yard setbacks and some of the impervious surface requirements. We've mentioned there's nine lots, so we have three more lots that are kind of part of these smaller group, and depending on the homes that we build on them, they could benefit from a relief on the rear yard setback also. One of the things that happened along the way, again, with the sales being slower than anticipated and the market asking for, or buyers coming in, you know, do you have a Rambler, do you have a Rambler plan, do you have a Rambler plan? Originally, we didn't, but we did bring in one of our smaller Rambler plans for this community, and it sold rather well. Unfortunately, that's one of the deeper homes, so that particular style of home created a little bit more of the setback situations that we're seeing today. So as Mr. Abel mentioned, we are looking for a PUD amendment, first for the setbacks for a deck. We're not asking for setback changes for the homes. This would just be for deck construction only. Right now, the rear yard setback on these lots is 25 feet, we're asking that to go down to 20 feet. That gives our homeowners and our buyers the chance to build a reasonable deck, which is about 10 feet deep, maybe 12 in some other situations. And as we discussed this with staff, they also pointed us out on the, in maximum impervious surface cover that's calculated with each of the homes, and that's where I did that spreadsheet, just to kind of see where we were. The PUD states that the maximum, maximum impervious surface for a lot is limited to 45% of the lot. A number of these homes, or of these nine lots, if you were to build a deck, you're going to bump over that 45%. Now, I do understand the city does have a ordinance that if you increase the gap on your deck, that the deck does not count towards the impervious surface.
Right.
The difference is, normal construction is an eighth-inch gap, which is similar to a 16-penny nail. And then if you change that gap to a quarter of an inch, then it doesn't count as an impervious surface. But again, building a deck on a brand-new home, that little larger gap, it, it does make a little bit of a difference. So in that request, rather than just asking for that request, I just did a little spreadsheet, I think that was part of the packet, you know, where are we with the impervious surface for the community? So I basically put, on most of the lots that we built a home, I put the actual impervious surface of the home and the driveway and the sidewalks, and calculated the impervious surface. And then on every one of those homes, I put a 12-by-24 deck, which is a good-sized deck. And then on the far right column, I calculated what the impervious surface would be on each lot. And as you can see, looking through, I mean, we're not significantly higher, I mean, most are under 45%, but a couple do bump over 45%. So that's why we added that also in our amendment. If you calculate, again, what we've built so far to date, put that 12-by-24 deck on every lot, and then go down to the eight lots that are remaining to build, and put that big Rambler home on there, and again, build that 12-by-24 deck, and then you add up the area of all- up the area of all those lots, and then you add up the area of all the impervious surface, and you do the math, and as aggregate, we come up with a 30% impervious surface. So we're, as a whole, the neighborhood's not getting near that 45% impervious surface. So I feel that's a reasonable request for, especially these lots that are smaller, under 8,000 square feet, to give those homeowners a little bit of a break so they can have a more standard deck. I also did it, I didn't give this to you, there are a number of rather really large lots out here, so I did pull those lots out just in case you'd look at it and say, hey, you've got a couple of big lots that are skewing your calculation. So I took out the top five lots in the spreadsheet and reran it again, and it went up to 33% for an over calculation. So we're still all under the goals of the community for impervious surface. So again, the amendment request, it feels reasonable and it's helpful to our buyers and you new homeowners so they can have a reasonable sized deck. The rear yard setback is pretty much consistent with other parts of the city, and the impervious surface just helps put together a deck that's a more typical construction.
However, with, so with the deck, impervious surface, if they were to build a deck that's 12 by 15, they could most likely, even with the 1/8 inch gap, meet the impervious surface on all of these lots. So you just want a much larger deck.
Again, we're really just talking about nine lots, and on the impervious surface, we're really just talking about one, two.
But you have to understand that the PUD amendment would apply to every single lot in this development in perpetuity, basically. So when the time comes to replace decks on the existing ones, they too could go to that 45 or 50 or higher impervious surface and setbacks. So we, as a council, I look at it in terms of longevity and future.
Right.
So the nine lots that you're talking about, one, I think the impervious surface issue is kind of a, I don't know that we could, I kind of look at it as a variance request. And I kind of say, well, is it really a hardship if they can put a 12 by 15 or 12 by 18 foot deck on their house? Is that really versus a 12 by 24? Is that really a hardship? So I'm having a little difficult time in that respect, on the impervious surface. As far as the setbacks go, I guess I'm fine with the 20. If that's what our standard is for R1 zoning, I don't know why we would be more restrictive for this.
I can tell you why, but we'll get into that.
Okay. Anyhow, those are my comments so far.
Were there any other residents, other than these nine, that requested larger decks by any chance?
No, and when we did our analysis to see which lots would benefit or, you know, a rear yard setback would help, I basically, I looked at every survey, and I basically added, you know, put out a deck that was 10 feet out, 20 feet wide, or something like that. So no, no other, again, we're, to answer your question, we have one buyer out there that has their building permit in, and we have another buyer that's looking to put in a building permit. Those are two that are on this list that could benefit from the reduced setback.
Okay. I was just wondering, because if somebody came in earlier and said they wanted it differently, but they said, no, that doesn't fit our standards or whatever, and now the nine lots here.
Yeah, the other lots that are, these nine lots, the decks have not been built on those. Couple of them are spec homes that haven't been sold yet. So our intent on some of those that are real tight, Lennar would just build the deck right to the setbacks so that the buyer can see it, you know, here's where the deck can go. To answer your question.
To your question, most of these houses don't have decks yet.
Right, they will.
They will. And so, as to the mayor's point, that will impact everyone, not just the nine. So this is big. This isn't just nine lots.
Well, actually, you know, with my spreadsheet, you know, if you open up the spreadsheet and go down the lot, I think a 12 by 24 deck is a pretty good sized deck.
That's huge.
Right. So if you go across, you know, all, everything on block one, if you put, we already know what the house size is, because the homes are built, and you go down the list, you know, lot one, you put the 12 by 24, put deck on it, we're up to 43, you know, impervious surface, so that meets the ordinance, there's no real need for a change. Lot two, we're at 40. Lot three, we're at 37. Lot four, you're at, you know, 30. You go right down the list, again, most of the lots are fine, it's just.
But that doesn't factor in the setback you'd need on all of these changes.
No, the setbacks, these, all this 12 by 24 deck fit on all these other lots, too. We're really just looking at nine lots where we got tight with the lots. Lots are a little bit smaller, those are the lots that ended up being under 8,000 square feet. So, I mean, I'd be willing and maybe work with staff on the impervious surface if we limit that request to smaller lots. The 8,000 square foot lots would be fine also.
Well, even on some of these impervious surface lots, lot three, block three, you have 48%, so that's only 3% over. It seems to me like there could be some other things you could do to meet that impervious, that 45% impervious surface. A tiny bit smaller deck, or maybe a walkway that's impervious, that's pervious. I mean, there's different techniques you can do, too.
Right. And all that particular lot is the lot that is in for permit.
Right. So I guess my, again, my feeling is the impervious surface issue could easily be addressed, tiny bit smaller deck, or a walkway that's pervious, or some other thing. The deck setback, if our standard is 20 feet, I'm not sure why, why we would hold them to 25. Or the other question, the other thing you could do is just identify the nine lots and allow those nine lots to have a 20 foot setback versus a 25.
Could you identify those nine lots on the change to the impervious surface as well?
Yes, that's kind of why I did this spreadsheet.
Not the entire?
Actually, actually, it's only five lots that we have impervious surface situation on. We could even limit it down to five.
If it's just five, I don't, if it was the entire PUD, I would have an issue with that, but if it's just five, I don't see why we couldn't just limit it to those five.
But that's not the issue being front of us.
No, I know that.
Are we?
Yeah, I mean, if you have comments or questions.
Can we dismiss the speaker so we can have a discussion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you. All right.
Well, I guess I'll start. And first of all, I'd like to thank David for bringing this to the council as a cadence of the history, and I was involved in the history in this from the start. This is a very contentious PUD when it went into place for those who were not here. Good example of why we shouldn't be doing a whole lot of PUDs. And I will, first of all, start with a question about why this would be different than Woodland Cove. Woodland Cove, we've got 1,071 units spread out over multiple acres, and they're designed with a master plan to work together. This was not what that, is not Woodland Cove in any way, shape, or form. This was crammed in here, pushed up against a lot of other lots very closely. Specifically, the one here, I can't see what the number is, but it's the very far end next to the park. That house, if you want past it, the back door is from about here to the podium from the park. That's how close that is. And that's one where there's, this is for a setback relief. I can see why, because you've got a good sized lot, but you built the house right on the lot line. And so, yeah, it doesn't take much to figure out why you need a variance there. And when this went into play, the whole neighborhood was very upset about this. And now what we're doing is looking to get setback relief, but there's no public comments or public hearing on this. So all the people, you're basically, what you're doing when you're doing a setback is you're kind of imposing on the person's property by, okay, you're bringing yourself closer to them. I think we should have notified the people of this possibly happening. I think we'd see a few people here. So I think in the name of transparency, that would be the right thing to do. I understand administratively why we wouldn't do that, but to John's point, if this was not a PUD, this would be a variance, and then it would go to the planning commission, there would be a public input, and then you'd hear about it. So I think we need to really think about that. I don't see this as meeting those criteria, especially when you look, one of the variance criteria is, was this caused by the homeowners? And I'm not going to pick on the particular homeowners, but when you buy a lot, a house in Red Oak, you have multiple house plans, as was pointed out, and these ones in question, a lot of these are the rampers that take up more space. So you kind of did create this problem by selecting a plan that took up more land space, and now it's being asked of the city to make that up. And I don't think that's fair to everyone else around them. I would agree on the impervious surface relief, you go to from an eighth of an inch to a quarter of an inch, or other ways, as you'd mentioned. I think that can be solved without any type of relief here. But the setback, I really have an issue with this. This was crammed in before. This is not a good area for this, and I want everyone to keep in mind, we're going to be asked for another one of these right behind this, and we're already setting back into most, a lot of these bump into the PUD that'll be up on the next agenda. So this was not a good place to put a PUD in the first place. This is the consequence of what we're seeing. I think this is just kind of a bad idea all the way around. I would, if the individual homeowner wants to come to a variance, I have no problem with that. We'll go through public comment, we'll hear about it, and we'll judge each one on their merits. But I think the other point you made, that this would apply to the whole development, is a valid point, because there are a lot of them don't have decks, and now if you open it up, there's going to be a lot more red dots on here that aren't going to have to come to us because of that. I just, this has not been a pleasant development, and this does not make it any better. I think if this had been brought to us when this proposal went in in the first place, it might have been even worse. So this is, I just don't think this is a good way to approach this at all.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think just, just from my perspective is, one of the questions I had is, why wasn't this seen ahead of time? None of these had decks. The assumption is they're going to, some of them are certainly going to have decks, and so either you work within the setback that existed, or it should have been built into the original PUD.
Yeah, I don't, and none of us were here on the council at the time.
So I'm not blaming anybody, it's just from my perspective, to go back now and change this in perpetuity.
Yeah. My only, my only comment is, if our regular setback for a deck is 20 feet, I don't know why this was set at 25. You know, maybe there was a rationale for.
There was a rationale.
Okay, what was, do you recall?
Because you're giving up setbacks on the side.
And so, when you're giving up setbacks somewhere else, I think that was part of the horse trading, if you will, for the PUD, because that's what happens, is, okay, you might get a little less on the side, you get more units in, but you get more on the back. I, you know, obviously, we'd have to pull up meeting minutes and go and find the, perhaps not even in the meeting minutes, but I suspect that there was some horse trading going on, and part of that give and take, this was the give.
Well, David, what is our standard, if you will, setback, side setbacks for PUD?
15. R1 is a 15 foot side here.
And what, what are the setbacks here, do you know? Side setbacks?
Eight.
Okay. For, on both sides?
Yeah.
Because I know a lot of times it's.
We try to average, we try to, you know, get to the average of it.
Okay. Because I know sometimes it's 10 on one and then five on the other. Yeah, I think we did that in Turtle Creek, didn't we? Like 10 on one and five on the other?
Um, yes, depends.
Yeah, okay. So PUDs, it's kind of all over the place?
Yep.
Right, and it's a result of that trading process. And I think that's what was traded here. So again, we're now giving up what was traded to get to where we're at. I really have a concern, especially with this one next to the park, because there's no homeowner to even speak on behalf of the park, and this is right up against the park.
And that's not the one that's asking for, or that is in need of a relief at this point.
Well, it's part of the request here.
You know, I know, I'm saying, but it's not, they don't have a permit in at this point for a deck. And there's some lots, if I'm not mistaken, that don't even have homes on them yet. So those lots, you could actually, you could build a smaller house and still meet the setbacks, so.
It doesn't have to be smaller, just a smaller footprint. Because that's a very important distinction, like on lot three, let's lot three here, I'm not even sure, not, one of these lots, it's a very big lot, it's got the big number three, I think it's lot six. It's a huge house, but it's not a big footprint, it's just taller. And there are ways, that's, that's why when this came in front of us to begin with, you know, there was a certain set number of homes, and as was pointed out, now people wanted these Ramblers, it's a bigger footprint, and there's a setback problem. So it was created by the people selling the homes.
So currently, we have one permit request in. And, well, you could make the amendment for one home.
Well, then that's a variance.
Yeah.
I guess I'd rather see it than, if that's what we want to do.
But the other thing is, I don't want to see nine variances coming through. That's also kind of.
It's a lot of work.
That's a lot of work for staff, and it's a lot of work for us, and, I mean, and for.
But they may not all materialize.
They may not, but I guess, I mean, if it's reasonable.
Especially when the ones that don't have houses with this. I just don't think it's, because now you're creating it for everybody.
No, I'm not saying doing it across the board for everybody in the development. I'm saying maybe identifying those two or three or four lots or five lots.
But you're still not giving any public input on it, so that's very concerning to me. So you can, if you want to take that approach, we can talk about it, but I, then I really think we'd have to bring it back for a public comment, either go through the planning commission process like we normally do for a variance, or we go through this process, whatever, but that concerns me, is no one around here knows what's going on.
Okay. Anybody else have comments?
Would, would it make sense to, would you feel better about it if we did have a public hearing on this, as if it were a variance?
Yeah, I really do. I think that at least, you know, in the spirit of transparency, you know, if no one shows up and everyone's cool with it, then, well, okay, fine, I'll listen. But I think to spring this on people that have already gone through, you know, as was pointed out, five years of construction and hasn't been pretty, we've had issues with the builder on not getting their CPUs.
Well, it's been a different builder.
They don't care, the residents don't care. It's a pile of dirt and weeds that they've been looking at for five years. I, you know, I think we need to be respectful of them.
I think those are some valid concerns, and I, I think I'd feel better, too, if we had a public hearing, because this would affect.
I have to ask, so I'm going to have to ask our attorney, is there an issue? Okay, so legally, there may be some issues, so if you could explain that. I don't know, I mean, if we say, okay, a public hearing, of course, we have to notify, notice that. And then, is, does this fall under the purview of a public hearing?
Madam Mayor, counsel, I think you're wrestling with the right issues. David and I have not had a chance to talk about this. The way I read the application, or the staff report, is the way all of you read it initially. It is meant to apply project wide. In other words, it will apply to all 59 lots, whether they're asking for it or not. There's been some discussion about picking out individual lots and having it only apply to those. I'm not aware that we've handled the PUD that way. That smells to me more like a variance, which would be handled on a case by case basis. I mean, I think what Mr. Molitor is wrestling with is, even if you say this is, this is a minor enough change, and that's the whole basis for there being an administrative ability here, is that it's a minor change, and I think some of you are questioning whether that's true. Otherwise, you would go back through some sort of public process, whether it be to amend the PUD itself, system wide, or to say, we're not going to do that, we're going to let people come in on a case by case basis. Either of those, I think, would involve a public hearing, typically before the planning commission, although it eventually gets to you, and you can take whatever testimony you want. you want.
Okay. Because, so I have another question. This may be a question of the applicant. The one home currently in question that wants to put a deck on, what is the largest deck that they could put on with the current standards? Do you know?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I've got the survey of the home here and I can share it with you too, so you can actually take a look at it. The distance from the back of the home to the rear lot line is 32.2 feet. So that would take off 25 and you're looking at a seven-foot wide deck.
Is that a ramble?
Yes.
There's a problem.
This is the rear of the home, the rear lot line, there's the distance. So we're requesting 20 feet, so that's a twelve-foot wide.
Twelve-foot, mm-hmm. Okay. All right. And the other homes that are part of these eight lots that you've identified, they don't have, they do or do not have decks currently?
They don't.
They don't?
They currently don't.
Okay. So-
Here's to the back, we got the 32 feet.
Is there another option? Is there, and then there's some lots that don't have any homes on them yet, correct? If I'm looking at the map correctly here that was provided in our packet?
Correct.
Okay. So there's, there's one, two, three, three lots with no homes?
No, there's about eight lots right now.
No, 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 there's three lots with no structures on them.
That are part of these nine lots.
That are part of the nine lots.
Correct.
So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, of course, that have, that have homes.
And out of those three, two of the lots, depending on the homes we place on there, may or may not, you know-
But those-
Benefit from a reduction.
Yeah, but-
One of those lots is one of the super, or small lots, where even if we put our smallest home on there, it's, it would be a six-foot deck or something.
Deck, okay. So then another question, could Lennar come in and ask for a variance for, a kind of, I'm sorry to put it this way, but a group variance? I mean, they could come in and apply and say, we would like a variance for lots A, B, C, D, whatever, and then apply for all of those at one time. And what I'm trying to get away from is, if the council doesn't want to do across the board, a PUD amendment, getting away from nine people or nine properties coming in each for a single variance, if we could do it all in one fell swoop, that would be a whole lot easier because that would also save the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods a lot of time too, from going to nine different variance requests.
So would you get to approve all nine or, or none if you got to do a group, right?
Well, we'd have to ask, I don't think so.
No, Madam Mayor, Council, I mean, I, I think from an efficiency standpoint, that would be okay, but, but my sense would be that you'd want to look at each one individually because each one is going to have a different set of circumstances. So I don't, I wouldn't see it as an all or nothing. So you could have a single hearing, but I think you'd still have to look at, in detail, at each one and, and weigh the merits of that application.
Because some of those houses aren't built, I mean, that, that, I don't see how you could get, with, for those that aren't built, and one of the variance criteria is, it's not a hardship created by the homeowner, I'm paraphrasing, but that would pass, it'd be very hard to pass that if you haven't even built the house.
Except for they're saying that their smallest house on those, that that one or, is it one lot, just one lot?
But that, that is, they knew that when they made the development and when they made the lot, house design. That was part of the trade-off is, if you're going to buy one of these, you may not have a deck. You may settle for a patio, you know?
Well, they could do that. They could put the, a landing in and then they could have their whole backyard be a patio.
Sure, they, they certainly could. But I mean, that's a viable alternative. Actually, the one on the very end, that might be the case, where they have a, a small patio that wraps around to the big part of the front yard that has more space. But that's part of the proposition, you know, we, this was approved with, with these house designs and when you're selling it, you can't say, oh, by the way, you're going to have a 12 by 24-foot deck when that was not what was approved. And, and so you're kind of doing this bait and switch on the homeowners. And I'll say, oh, by the way, we told them we can build a deck, now we're going to ask you to allow for it. That's, that's not what was approved and that wasn't part of the agreement. And I, I really think in that case, where the house hasn't been built, that's really egregious.
Okay. So, I guess, I would, since it seems like there's seen, is there some, what would you like to do, I guess? The, I know, we, we know what you'd like to do, go through the variance process. So then the question would be, do they have to go to the planning commission and then the council, or can they come directly to the council?
If, if I may, I, I guess, given that Ron hasn't been able to talk to this with David, perhaps we send this back to staff and now that they know our concerns, let them come back to us with another recommended action.
Well, the only, the only concern I have is, we do have one resident, a resident of Minatrista that has a house that wants to put a deck on. So here's the issue, it's a timing issue, because now we're not going to meet until July 15th. And then they come back July 15th and tell us what we, what our options are, what the next steps could be. That means we're not, then that comes, brings it back to the beginning of August, maybe even not till the end of August. So I'm, I'm just wondering, do we want to wait that long for this one applicant that has a request in front of the council?
I, I would, I understand your point and I, I do, I, I, I hear you. And if this was something that the city had done and imposed upon them as a hardship, I'd be all ears. However, the person bought the house, they knew what the rules were when they bought the house, okay? It isn't like we just sprung this on them. So, you know, if they, and the house by definition can't be more than two or three years old. They got this far without a deck, I think a couple more months, and to do due process on this is not going to be a unreasonable ask. Again, if we had imposed this condition, different story. But the rules were there, they knew it, and they might just have to wait a couple months. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Rest of the council?
Do we always have to do a public hearing? Some situations we do a letter to surrounding people that would be affected. Does it always have to go to a public hearing?
For, for a variance, if you're going to do a variance, there's a public hearing required.
Okay.
That's what the letter does.
So if, if the council wishes to run this through as a variance, then a public notice would have to be given and there's certain timeframes. So you have two weeks, I think it is, 10 days?
Ten days. We, we've missed our June planning commission deadline.
Right.
So if that's the process, it would go to a July planning commission and it'd be the first meeting in August.
Before the council could even act on it.
But it has to go in front of the planning commission?
Yeah, that's where the public hearings for variances have to occur. I mean, unless, can it come to the council without the planning commission?
Well, Madam Mayor, Council, again, we haven't had, staff has not had a chance to discuss this. What you're describing is the normal process for a variance outside of a PUD. I guess I'd have to look at the ordinance to see whether there's any way to deviate from that.
Right, I mean, it is a PUD, so I mean, we as staff could have done this administratively, didn't feel comfortable doing so, so we brought it to you. So it, we do need time to look at it, but I think theoretically there would be, if it's transparency in a public hearing and you're willing to bypass the planning commission, there's, you could probably go through a similar motion and hold, and give notice and hold a hearing, you as a council on July 15th, if that's your prerogative. You know, cut, cut the time down a bit, you still do, you're still transparent, you're still holding the, the hearing, you're notifying people, and then making that decision then at, at July 15th. Follow the same process, basically, you're going to amend the PUD and you can talk about how you want to do that, if you're going to do these lots or globally or whatever, but something throughout there.
Yeah. So on the 15th, if we went that route, we could make a decision one way or the other, how many lots we would want to bring in or leave out, or do a whole amendment overall? I mean, we could make a decision then.
I, I believe so, yes. I mean, again, we can look at the PUD language a little more closely, but that's the point of a PUD.
Right.
Is to give you flexibility.
Flexibility, right.
But we, we would also be able to consider each parcel by itself.
You could, yeah.
Okay. I, I think it makes sense to do it on the 15th and see if we can get it done.
Well, it would be a whole lot quicker than running into August, so.
Is there some way, because I do value the planning committee's opinions. Can we send the information to them as well and ask them to send in any of their opinions? Is that like something we don't do?
Well, you probably wouldn't do that, just simply because they, they are only a recommending body and this is our decision to make. And if we want to kind of, I'm not saying expedite it, but move it along quicker, I think it would just, they, they certainly could come to the public hearing and give their opinion. And, and it wouldn't even have to be a quotes-unquotes official public hearing, it could just be a hearing where we take public input. Either way, it's a public hearing.
Well, I think it has to be noticed though to the homeowners.
Sure, that's what I'm saying, absolutely. It could be through letters or-
We'll follow the same variance procedure, if you will, from a notice standpoint, we'll publish it in the newspaper. I just, it, it just, we'll go to straight counsel on that planning commission.
I think that would be a better, we can notify the planning commission that that's what we're going to do.
Sure, certainly.
They stick, certain show up, they can make their comments.
Sure.
Like anybody in the public, anybody in the city could make comments.
So, given that, I think we, our policies, we notice, notify anybody within a 500-foot, I then assume you would notify anybody within a 500-foot radius of the impaired development?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is that what the council wants to do? I'm saying, so, do you need, do you need some time? I mean, I just-
Well, no, Madam Mayor, what I was going to say, you've got an application in front of you. So I think you need to take action on that, realizing there's a 60-day rule issue. So you, I, I don't know where we are in that process, but what, even if you're talking about some sort of alternative process, you do have a live application, which either needs to be approved or continued or denied.
Okay, thank you. That's, was my next question. Would the council like to continue this application to the July 15th meeting? If so, can I have a motion to continue it to the July 15th meeting? I think we're still within the 60 days.
We are still within it and I'm sure the applicant would probably be willing to waive their, their 60-day timeline, but I guess, given the process we just talked about, I guess instead of acting and denying it, I would, I would ask that you continue it and we can work out the details with the applicant about the 60-day rule to make sure we're still okay on timing.
Right. Yeah, I, I would assume the applicant would not be interested in having it denied tonight. I think it would be better to continue it to the July 15th meeting.
Okay, we're okay with extending it an additional 60 days.
Okay. So we should be good there. So with that, can I get a motion to extend to July 15th, the application for the PUD amendment for Red Oak?
Somewhat.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to extend the PUD application amendment for Red Oak to July's 15th. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, although, yep.
So just so I'm clear, on July 15th, we're back readdressing this exact same issue to make a 59, or for all 59 lots, either approve or disapprove?
No, no. We're going to be back on the 15th, one, to hear if there's any resident's concerns, two, to decide on the pervious surface issue, and two, then the setbacks and whether we address all 59 lots or whether we address one light, lot, or nine lots. We can, we can make that determination at that time.
Okay.
Okay, so we're all, all clear? All right?
Thank you.
So with that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, thank you. We'll move on to our next business item and that's approved cons, approved consent to the acquisition of 1755 Retreat Circle by Three Rivers Park District. And we have Kelly with, oh, okay, go ahead.
I can go ahead, Madam Mayor, Council. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Three Rivers Park District staff, and Kelly Grisman is in the audience, as you just pointed out, Madam Mayor. She, she did attend our May 20th city council meeting to give an update more globally about activity going on with Three Rivers Park District in our city and then specifically did, did talk about and bring up the acquisition of 1755 Retreat Circle. The owners of that property approached the district shortly after Three Rivers Park District purchased the property at 1705 Retreat Circle back in 2018. As the council will recall, that's the property just directly north of 1755, which you're, you're looking at tonight. 1755 Retreat Circle is a, a little over 15 acres and is currently a vacant piece of property. In conjunction with the, the purchase, the district is seeking a master plan amendment to include the property within the master plan boundary for the Kingswood Park. Should be noted that when Kelly was here, we mentioned that we would send the, the master plan amendment and the, the purchase of the property through our Parks Commission and Planning Commission. So at their June 11th meeting, the Parks Commission reviewed the property with our Parks Trails and Open Space Plan and they did determine that the use is consistent with that plan. And then on May 28th, the Planning Commission reviewed the property with our comprehensive plan and did find the, the use, the proposed use of the property consistent with the comprehensive plan. So with that, there is a resolution before you this evening, allowing for that land acquisition along with the master plan amendment to the Kingswood Park master plan. And as mentioned, Kelly is in the audience, if you have any questions for her.
Ms. Grisman, would you care to make any comments?
Madam Mayor, fellow council members, I just wanted to thank you and David in particular for your continued support of Three Rivers. I know it's a little premature for this, but just in general of, of this process and working collaboratively and for solutions. And David, as always, has been exceptionally fabulous to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any questions of staff?
I, I have just some comments I'd like to make. I, this is, this is the third parcel in less than a year that Three Rivers has purchased in Minatrista. And if you go back and look at them, the, the Hallstead Drive parcel was purch, it was 56 acres and it was, the market value of that property was $182,000. It was purchased for $610,000. The market value on this property, the 1755, first of all, it was bought in 2006 for $191,000. Current market value is $247,000. We're using taxpayer dollars and spending $715,000 on something that has a market valuation of 247. And I support parks. I, I think it's great that we're protecting Little Long Lake and I, I don't have any problem with that. But from a taxpayer perspective, when we're paying $715,000 for a parcel that has a value of less than, of only 247, I, I think that's way out of line. And I think, as a council, I think we have a say in letting this happen here in Minatrista. And I think we, and it's not just taking the property off the tax rolls, it's, this property is, they pay about four grand each year. But that's year after year after year after year, that money's going away. And as, we're supposed to be stewards of the taxpayers and their taxpayer dollars. And these aren't necessarily taxpayer dollars coming from Minatrista taxpayers. These, these tax dollars are coming from all over the state and the county. And when you take property off tax rolls, it doesn't just come off Minatrista tax rolls, it comes off the school district, it comes off the county tax rolls as well. And I just think these inflated prices, $715,000 for this parcel is way out of line. And I, I would like to see the, the Three Rivers go back to the buyer and, I mean, if this buyer were selling this on the open market, 300,000, 350,000 would be something- something that they would take, I would think. And that's, you know, three, $400,000 difference. And I don't understand why these exorbitant prices are being paid for these parcels, just because it's taxpayer dollars. How does Three Rivers justify $715,000 for this parcel that is valued at 247?
Okay, so that's a question from Ms. Grissom. It's 16 acres, correct?
Yep. Madam Mayor, fellow council members, I'm glad you brought this issue up, because this is something that we deal with on a daily basis anytime we're working on land acquisition. And I'm not the expert on how the assessor's market rate is established, but I can tell you across the board, for the last 15 years that I've worked for Three Rivers in buying land, they're almost never in line with what the true appraised value is and what people are actually selling their property for on the market. Every time Three Rivers buys a property, we do a full appraisal report with an MAI appraiser, and they determine the highest best value, and they pull all the different comps from the area. And so it's not, there's actually very little negotiation between the seller and Three Rivers, it's all based on that appraisal report. And that is what the property was valued at.
But we also have an assessor that goes, every year goes out and values the parcels out there, so...
No, not every year. They do it every four years, but the market, the assessor has maybe different standards. But just as a, for instance, we just paid $50,000 an acre for raw agricultural land for a water tower, and this is 16 acres of beautifully wooded, old wood on a pristine lake with lake shore frontage. And they paid $45,000 an acre. I have a hard time believing that it's not valued at $45,000 an acre.
Then why didn't our county assessor...
Well, that's something you'd have to ask him!
Yeah, I would agree with your assessment. I think you're right, in terms of, it is lake shore property, and it's a big chunk. That probably, I mean, as much I hate to say, that probably is a fair market value. But I think your point's very valid. It's like, when I saw that too, I'm like, how did that get assessed for, was it $250,000 or whatever it was?
Yeah, and that's something we should talk to our assessor about.
We really should, because it's...
Well, and it's not an isolated instance, though. The Hallstead Drive parcels, 56 acres, that market value on 56 acres was $182.
Oh, that was for taxable purposes, so you have to understand that parcel was also an egg, it could have been an egg preserve or in green acres as well, which will really greatly diminish the taxable value of that property.
No, I'm not talking about taxable. There's an assessed value and there's market value. This was market value.
Again, maybe that's something we need to talk to our assessor about.
But these are exorbitant numbers that taxpayer dollars are spending on these parcels. $610,000 is what we paid for.
Well, I don't know that, that's not really the discussion here tonight as to whether or not we agree with the assessor's appraisal. She answered your question, they do, what did you say, the appraiser, M...
An MAI, or MAI appraiser, so I think that's one of the very top certifications or levels. And maybe I could defer to your general counsel could probably speak of that a little bit better than I could. And it's a full appraisal report. So we spend quite a bit of money when we do an appraisal, and it takes six weeks. It does include a site visit, and they go and they look at all of the utilities. They usually call David and they ask what's the highest and best use, and what is its own for, how many buildable units are. It's a very legitimate process. And I can speak, if you go just on edinerelity.com and look at what houses are being bought and sold for, and the new cross-reference Hennepin County property records, this is not a special case. This is very consistent with what's happening on almost every single parcel.
And it's possible that it hasn't been appraised for the last three or four years, and so the market, or the taxable market value hasn't caught up with the current market rate, too. So I know they're usually a year, maybe even two years behind, but...
And I would accept that argument if the numbers were somewhat close, but it's like three times higher than, and it was purchased in 2006 for $191. Was it way underpriced then? Was it way underpriced when it was assessed a couple of years ago? But there seems to be a theme running through these parcels that are being acquired, that the amount that is, they're selling for is extraordinary.
So, again, that's not our purview or our charge tonight.
We have a decision to make as a council, whether or not we are going to allow this to occur or not. And I have a problem with it.
Okay.
It sounds like Three Rivers has done their due diligence. The numbers seem out, but they have a willing seller as well.
Right.
I'd be willing to at that price.
So I guess I don't have a problem with it. It's kind of out of our control, anyway, what they want to pay for.
No, it isn't. We have control over this. This is our decision.
We have control over it, but if the seller, if somebody wants to buy your property for a million dollars, would you say, no, because it's missing with the taxpayers?
This is a government agency, this is a government entity. That's why it's our decision.
Well, it is our decision. And a professional, a very qualified professional has done a complete and thorough analysis of what the market value of this property is. We don't know why the Hennepin County Assessor has appraised it so low. We don't know what goes in behind his appraisal, appraisals, and why it's so low. But we do know that we have an legitimate appraisal, that's what they're paying for it. We have a willing seller. The seller approached the park district, not the other way around. And I too, I feel that there's, property owners have property rights. And I do understand your perspective, not wanting to spend more dollars, more tax dollars on property. But if this, if appraisal had never been done, and the property owner simply said to Three Rivers, "I want to sell it for $730,000, nothing lasts," and Three Rivers says, "Sure," I might have a problem with that. But when a professional appraiser has said, "This is what the property's worth. If you want to buy it, this is what you're going to have to pay," and the owner, the property owner, wants to sell it, I have a hard time saying, "No, I'm not going to sell it to you because I think this is overpriced." I'm not an appraiser, I'm not a professional in that realm. I don't, I wouldn't have a clue as to what it's worth. So I'm going to take the word of a professional appraiser that's done the work and that's dug into this, and I'm going to say, okay, they probably know what they're talking about. I'm not just going to pull a number out of the sky. So that's where I stand. Is there anybody else wanting to make a comment?
I think there are two different issues. You know, tonight we're here to decide, you know, with the properties, that, you know, whether to go forward with it. But the whole appraisal issue, it was done professionally. And to bring that up with Hennepin County or whoever, that's a totally separate thing. That's, I think the due diligence was done, the appraising came out that way. And it is, again, property rights, they wanted to sell it, it stays within our rural character, which we're all very cautious about, following the plan as well. And I think it is a good fit for Minnetrista.
The other thing I look at is the protection of the lake. And eventually, if this lake gets degraded, it's going to cost the city and the taxpayers a whole lot more money to restore it and bring it back, if even possible, to what it is today. And so, in the end, you actually may be saving a lot of taxpayer dollars.
I'd like to say one more thing. Every budget year, we talk about not having enough money to spend on roads and infrastructure and the things that we're tasked to take care of. And this, this property was purchased in 2006 for $191,000. And these people lived across the street from me that purchased this land. And I'm a business person, and if, when you go to buy a piece of property for someone, you try and get the best price that you can, in the free market, you do. If you're a government agency, maybe not. But I think we ought to steward our resources and our taxpayer dollars as if they were our dollars, not just taxpayer dollars that just are going to come in no matter what we do. And at the end of the day, we don't have any, we don't have a right to complain that we're not building roads and infrastructure and doing what we're supposed to do, and we don't have enough money to do that, when we're spending $400,000 more than we need to on this property.
But that's your opinion, and you haven't done, and you're not a professional...
I'll keep it quiet now.
Okay, you're not a professional appraiser, you haven't done the appraisal.
I think this is ridiculous.
Okay, okay, and that's, all right, thank you. All right, so with that, any other questions or comments from, otherwise, the Park District is asking for approval or consent to the acquisition of 1755 Retreat Circle for Park District land.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further comments or questions?
I will make one comment, actually two. First of all, as Ms. Mortensen pointed out, it is kind of two separate decisions. We're being asked in light of, does this fit with how we want to use the land. The second part about that's purchase price. And I get Mrs. Bruce's point about the overall use of tax dollars. To that question, I'm going to let that question, those park commissioners need to be able to address the cost purchase, because they're ultimately responsible for the price that was paid for this. We have no control over the price. The park commissioners do. So that, if taxpayers have a concern about that, they can address it to those. We're asked about...
To Three Rivers Park District, right.
Three Rivers, thank you.
But if we reject it...
No, hold on, just a minute.
If we reject it...
Ms. Bruce, let Mr. Maliter finish. Ms. Bruce, let Mr. Maliter finish. Mr. Maliter?
Again, if they have a problem, they can go back and talk to the Park Commission, Three Rivers Park Commission. That's where that originates. My second point about using money, $400,000, if that $400,000 came out of a pot of money that we could use for roads, that'd be a whole different story. But, and I know from an overall tax perspective, it's taxpayer money. But I, nor can this body, go and grab that $400,000, or whatever money that is, whatever amount it is, pull it out and use it for roads. Wish I could, because I could, if I could do that, I would, because I would value that more than this piece of property. But I can't. It's not a prerogative of us. And so it's a recognition of what we can control over. And I do get your point that we could stop this. And would that stop the spending of the money? I'm not so sure it would. I think it'd probably just be used for another parcel, you know, or somewhat something else. But what we're being asked is consent for the use of the land. And in that regard, I think it's, now that the plan has been amended to reflect that, you know, I'm not, I don't want you to think I'm dismissive of your concerns, but there are different agencies at play here that have different elements of this decision. And we don't have elements, all those elements, in our control. I know that's not what you want to hear.
Right.
And we see this very differently, and I see it very differently.
I think we understand your concerns, but I think we're seeing it differently.
Thank you.
So...
One, if you, if I can give one upside to this, by having, one of the things I know that the county assessor does look at is they always look at sales of existing surrounding properties.
So it's...
So if there are other properties around us that are grossly undervalued, as this one appears to be, that might be addressed with the sale of this property.
Well, that is the difference, is the county assessor's going to look comparable sales in the area. Three Rivers is going to look at comparable park sales up and date.
No, no, Brian, what we're talking about here is from a tax perspective.
No, I know, but I'm saying, I'm just saying the difference between they have in a county assessor, what they look at versus what their appraiser is going to do.
I think their appraiser...
All I'm saying is that if there's parcels around here that appear to be under-valued, this will be a comparable sale to say, "Look, you're getting a great deal, your valuation needs to go up." And so, it does, you know, I'm, there's some underlying...
All right. Any other comments? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1. Bruce dissenting. So we'll move on to approve a professional services agreement for paving, pavement coring for potential future street improvement projects. Ms. Fowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At the last council meeting, we had a discussion with regards to some of the information contained in a packet for council consideration for potential future street improvement projects. At that time, the council requested some additional information, that being corings to be taken in some of these areas where corings had not been acquired, so that we could either verify, we could verify the surface inspections that were performed on the streets included in that packet. Included in your packet this evening is the proposal for 32 cores on the streets identified within the proposal. I'd like to take note that corings for the Hart Scrabble area, Pine Circle, and Loring Drive were collected last year. We did verify that, so those are not included in this proposal. And the proposal is, excuse me, the proposal is included in your packet is for hourly, to be built hourly, not to exceed $3,486. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have at this time.
I have more of a comment. The corings that are being proposed for Sterling Drive and Retreat Circle, that's five corings, it's not a lot of money, but I'm really not in favor of even considering those at this time. The reason being is that when you look at, so those properties were assessed with the Game Farm Road project, and that was only, you know, nine years ago. And they had, got a pretty heavy assessment, and to come back now in the next year or two with another pretty hefty assessment, I think would be a difficult position for the city to do. So I'm just asking the city or the council, we have a whole lot of other roads that we can consider doing within the next five or six years. I don't even think we're going to get all of these done, let alone the ones on Sterling and Retreat. Is this something we really want to do right now?
Are those reclamations on Sterling and Retreat?
Yeah, yeah, they are, so...
They're listed as such, although they're just over the hill from me, and I drove them both a week ago or so. And visually, I admit it, visually, they look a lot better than some other roads that are rated higher or lower, whichever way. But yeah, I would agree with, I mean, they just got hit by the Game Farm Road one, and the traffic on them, there's not a lot. Obviously, we just lost two taxpayers off of Retreat Circle.
No, they would actually be assessed.
Oh, is that right, Three Rivers?
Yep, mhm. They would be assessed, mhm.
And Sterling doesn't have a lot either. And I know we try to bundle in the, wherever we're doing the projects. And I think maybe the projects this year will be somewhere away from there anyways, so...
The only thing that, if it, it was reclamation, is what it was scheduled for. And I don't know if it would be mill and overlay, but if it was going to be mill and overlay, that might be something we would want to consider sooner than later. But I do think it was on our list for reclamation.
Wouldn't the corings tell us if it would be suitable for a mill and overlay versus reclamation?
That's correct.
Okay, so...
So maybe we ought to do the corings and...
And then if it's mill and overlay, that's fine. I just don't want to go down the path that this is an option for reclamation, because I do think that would be difficult to do. Yeah, so, all right, all right. Any other questions?
So, we end up on...
Leaving them in and doing corings to determine whether or not we can do a mill and overlay. Are we in agreement, then, with that?
Yes.
All right, all right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the professional service agreement for pavement coring for potential future street improvement projects as presented in our packet.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made the motion, and Ms. Bruce seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, professional service agreement for Kingspoint Road Water Main Replacement and Street Repair Project. Who's taking that?
That's me. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Included in your packet this evening for your consideration is a proposal to perform water main and street repairs on Kingspoint Road. As the council may recall, back in, I believe it was early March, there was an extremely, extremely cold weather, and the 20-inch water main within Kingspoint Road experienced a break. Public Works crews went out to the site to make a repair... Public Works crews went out to the site to make a repair. And due to the, the depth of the frost, which I believe was between five and six feet, they, they performed a repair to the water main to get it, to get it back, piece back together. With that, though, the, the repair done at that time was to bend the water main over the culvert under, that extends underneath Kings Point Road. And because of the size of the water, the size of the water main and the pressures, the forces through the bends, we're recommending that it be repaired to remove those bends, and then the street patched back together accordingly. So with that, we do have included in the proposal a very high level cost based on what we're seeing in the current bidding environment. We, we included a little bit higher contingency in this instance, 15%, just because there was, we do have some good field data from when the repair was performed. But we certainly, once you get in there and take a look at the extent of the water main and how low it is, if there's some additional water main that should be replaced, we felt that it was appropriate to up that contingency from 10 to 15%. And with that, we, we propose an engineering fee hourly not to exceed of $6,567 to prepare the plans and specifications to do the work. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has at this time.
So some of, some people weren't here when this was all designed, but I believe SCH was the designer on the, who was the, who designed?
WSB.
Oh, you designed? So my concern is whether we, if we redesign it the same way, are we going to end up with the same issues? And what happened, why did it break and that kind of thing?
Thank you, that's, that's a very good question, Madam Mayor. So the genesis of the break, you know, it was extremely cold. You had the cold weather going through the culvert at the time. And you have some exposure along the sides of the road down to the gully section, or the ravine section on each side of Kings Point Road. The difference, since we, we saw, we, we had, I believe it was about eight years of this water main in place during winter, didn't see an issue. So in, in this instance, in the repair of this, we would propose to insulate the water main both above and below the water main. It's a foam board insulation to provide that extra layer so that, that extra layer of protection from the water main, so that we can mitigate any frost moving up from that culvert, which is what we think happened with the water main break.
Was there any insulation above or below?
Not to my knowledge.
And so, just following the normal course of business, there would be this, and then there would be another proposal from WSB at a later point for construction management oversight?
Correct.
Do you have any idea what that's going to be?
I would anticipate it would be minimal, given the, the small scope of the project.
Is that something our public works department would do?
If that's something that the council would like staff to look into, we could certainly have that discussion and see if there is, if there's somebody with the capacity to do the work and with the experience necessary to do that.
Alright.
Sure, go ahead.
I guess I have a real problem with this particular one. This was designed by, and I'm sorry to look at you, Allison, I know this is done by your predecessor, but, or.
Somebody else.
This was done by WSB in the not-too-distant past. And to me, doesn't look like it was very engineered very well, otherwise we wouldn't have had this problem. And we've incurred numerous other expenses, as we know, to fix this. I guess, and then there's going to be, I just pointed out, there'll be an additional expense on top of this to oversee the construction. Quite frankly, I'd actually like to see this done on WSB's now, and not us. If we can't do that, I would like to see some kind of reduced rates. This, you know, if we're talking about something that was done 20 years ago, I could probably be okay with that. But this is, in construction terms, this is pretty new. And this does not look like it was engineered the way it should have been. We have winters here, this is no surprise. I see in the, in the, roll the, the check register for this month, we had a payment to WSB for $1,204.75 for Kings Point Road Water Main Break Engineering Survey. So we've already paid something on this. And I, like I said, I would like to see, just given the situation and how we've used WSB for all of our engineering needs, that some concession be given to us on this, because I, this just doesn't seem right to me.
Okay. Council?
I, I agree.
I agree as well.
Good point.
Alright, so, maybe we could bring this, are we on some kind of a timeframe? I, I'm assuming we'd still be okay?
We certainly lose a month of time with the gap between the council meetings. That being said, it provides us some, you know, we do have construction season into fall. It's a smaller scale project in that this is a repair. So I think there's certainly adequate time to do the construction. The question is whether or not we would get, and I don't know if this would change if we move forward right now to delay a month.
Well, let me put it to you this way. Let me put it to you this way. If WSB is going to say, okay, they will provide the $6,600 of service at no charge to us, I think you could move forward. If, if you come back and say, we can't do that, then the council has to have a bigger discussion.
And I think the reason why I was asking about the construction management services is I don't want to see this come back baked into that. You know, I don't want all of a sudden see, okay, we get this for nothing, and now our construction management part comes up this high. I'd kind of like to see it all come together. And I realize that's a little bit out of the norm, but this whole situation's a little out of the norm.
Sure.
So I just got to see that as well.
Alright. Okay. Alright, so we'll bring this back to the July 15th unless, unless we hear good news. So next, we're, we have a conditional offer of employment to Gary Nelson for the building inspector program, position.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. So on behalf of the Personnel Committee, as Madam Mayor mentioned, you're being asked to approve a resolution for conditional offer of employment for Mr. Gary Nelson as the Building Inspector for the City of Minnetrista. This position's being filled due to the opening that was created with the promotion of Robert Goodman, Building Official. This position was posted, and as you recall, extended. We received a total of nine applications, and we opted to interview seven total applicants. The staff ultimately considered two final applicants, with Mr. Gary Nelson emerging as the choice for hire. He has over 20 years of a construction, industry, and building experience, including code compliance and permitting processes. He's spent six years as a licensed building contractor. And in excess of the requirement for this job, he has earned his Building Official Limited License. He's also currently enrolled in a building inspector, building inspections.
Technology.
Always, technology? Program, that one always throws me off. And that's an evening program that he is doing on the side. So the final steps for this process will include and are currently including the review of a driving record and criminal history. Currently, he lived out of state as well, so those just take longer. We're clear in Minnesota, we're waiting on his out of state. And then reference checks, which have been completed. So Gary Nelson had to bring a breadth of experience and knowledge to this role, and the terms of employment offered are outlined in the attached conditional offer. And those do match the discussion that we had at the last city council meeting in regards to the Building Official and the Building Inspector. The conditional offer is at the very beginning of Level 10, which is what this position is listed at, which is 2704. So there's a recommendation from the Personnel Committee that the council approve a conditional offer of employment for Mr. Gary Nelson as the Building Inspector with an expected start date of June 24th.
Any questions? I know we talked about, about this at our last meeting and, and it brought you up to speed on the market rate and all of that, so. If not, is there then a motion to approve the conditional offer of employment to Gary Nelson for the Building Inspector position as presented in your packet?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Trumperlin. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes five oh. So moving on to another employment offer to Christopher Sandberg for the Public Works Maintenance Position.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, member of the council. When it rains, it pours. We found candidates, this is good. So the city council is being asked to approve on behalf of the Personnel Committee an offer of employment for Mr. Christopher Sandberg as a full-time Public Works Maintenance Worker. The conditional offer letter was attached. This position as well was extended. Ultimately, we received two applications. Two interviews were offered, and we came to the conclusion that Mr. Christopher Sandberg was the best candidate. This position is open due to the resignation of Maintenance Worker Erin Rassett a few months back. In regards to Christopher's qualifications, he has a CDL licensure with air brake and tanker endorsement. He comes to us from a neighboring city with two years of public works experience. He has 10 years of private sector experience as a large equipment operator, sharing some experience with one of our current employees. He has experience with large machine operation and experience with pavement work, sump tools, jetting tamperers, jumping jacks, and one-ton plowing. So we feel like he would bring a great deal of transferable skills. And based on his experience coming from another city, we recommend that Mr. Christopher Sandberg is brought in as a Public Works Maintenance Worker at a Step Two with the City of Minnetrista, which is very consistent with what we've done for other employees who come in with public works experience. And he has an expected start date at the beginning of July.
I know we need more public works people, and I know Gary is really looking forward to having somebody else on, another person on board, so. Any questions of staff?
Just a procedural note, can you please update your prepared by line on your memo?
Yes, I noted that, thank you.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then, is there a motion to approve Christopher Sandberg for the Public Works Maintenance Worker position?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Trumperlin. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes. So next, there's a resolution to approve the Lake Minnetonka SWAT Joint Powers Agreement. I believe this is Chief Falls.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a, tonight is a joint powers agreement that has been drafted for the Lake Minnetonka area SWAT team. And so with that, this team was formed in 2006 and has been operating under our General Police Mutual Aid Agreement since that date. And while that has worked relatively well, that, that agreement is really designed, or has been designed, for general police mutual aid. So in other words, if another agency needs our assistance, we can go assist them, and they can come and assist us. It was never really designed to address the specific operations of a SWAT team. And so the reason this came about is one of the member cities of the SWAT team had a, an insurance audit by the League of Minnesota Cities. And so the league recommended that we come up with a joint powers agreement specifically for the Lake Minnetonka SWAT team, very similar to the, the way we do the West Metro Drug Task Force. And so with that, the joint powers agreement just simply spells out things very specifically to the SWAT team. It also then provides separate insurance coverage. So from a liability standpoint, it's just better coverage, and it better protects all of the member cities, including ours, from, from any issues that might arise. And as you know, SWAT teams typically are called to deal with much higher risk incidents than, than we would normally deal with. And so this just makes sense on many, many levels. We've been doing this for years with the Drug Task Force. And the same thing kind of applies to them, because they also are oftentimes involved in much higher risk incidents. And so the, it's not that there's anything wrong with what we were doing, but I think as, as the team has evolved and as, as insurance audits have caught up with us, and just a review of best practices, it just makes sense to, to take the next step and to clean this up and, and address very specifically the needs of the SWAT team in the same manner we do the Drug Task Force. I should mention that the, there's really no additional cost to the city, because this annual premium that is about $1,500 a year is divided amongst the, the member cities. And that will come out of the SWAT team's budget, which is paid for through, we pay, I guess we pay a fee per operator, each member city does. We pay that, and we have paid that since the inception of the team. And so this insurance coverage will come out of that budget, which already exists. So we're not increasing the budget or adding any additional insurance costs. It'll just be absorbed from that budget. So I guess with that, I stand for any questions, otherwise looking for a motion to approve this.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, otherwise, is there a motion to approve the Lake Minnetonka SWAT Team Joint Powers Agreement?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes five oh. What we're going to do right now is, we're shortly before nine o'clock, so we need to change the tape. So I'm going to ask that we take a quick break and then come back and finish up our, our meeting. We are all reassembled, assuming we're ready to go. So we'll move on with our agenda. Our next agenda item is a discussion of Halsted Drive Project. And I believe, and we have some options here.
Yeah, I'm just going to start off real quick. So Allison will kind of lead us through, and Ron Beatty will probably help chime in. We've been working with Jim Strumman as well from the Kennedy and Graven office, but we've been meeting on this for a while, and so the handout that Allison gave you, she'll walk you through it. I know she's worked with Brian on the dollar figures. We've been trying to hone this down to a, a number, and as the mayor mentioned, there's a couple of options, and I'm sure at that point, we'll get Ron involved in discussing those two options, what the, what they need for us at the city. So Allison and Ron, I'll start with Allison, I guess.
Thank you, Administrator Barone. So the council, the council packet includes some background information, just for historical purposes. And the intent with this discussion item and recommended action was to take the steps necessary to complete the project. We currently do not have a schedule from Ram Construction to finish the work. There really hasn't been much work done out there. The, the little work that has been done continues to be, a couple of folks show up unannounced, we don't know they're out there, a resident call. So as we've progressed through these discussions with city staff and general counsel, is what options does the city have at their disposal to, to get this work completed, get this contract, get this project completed, and move on? So we looked at some of the conditions within the general conditions of the contract, the engineer's joint contract documents, and provided the council with a couple of options that we identified within those contract documents. The first one is to put contractor on notice that there's defective work. In this instance, this would apply to, for example, if you've driven down Halsted, there's some restoration work that was done at the edge of Halsted Drive where the seed has not taken, it's not growing. So that would be an example of defective work that there, that we can go in and say, this isn't done, and go in, if you don't fix it within the seven days, the city can come in and do that. This option, however, when we look at the remaining work, some of the items that remain to be done, for example, are at the, at the trail crossing. The federal regulations require what's called an ADA compliant crossing. The federal regulations require what's called an ADA compliant crossing. And what that means is to cut out a portion of the black top of the trail, put in the concrete, and then what's called truncated domes. It's those bumps for the visually impaired so that they know they're crossing the road. So, in this instance, if we're putting a contractor on notice of defective work, when I look at the remaining work, that particular item would not be covered. So, that has some pluses and minuses with going that route. Another route that we've discussed is to declare that the contractor's in default of the contract, and put them on notice of that, and after a period of time for the contractor to remedy on that notice, if they, if that time has lapsed and they haven't done the work, then we could have, look at options as far as public works personnel performing some of the work, or another contractor. So, we've had some extensive conversations, as I mentioned, with staff and with legal counsel. We've also talked to the folks at State Aid, since State Aid funding was used for this project, to make sure when we're looking at these options, that we're not jeopardizing the State Aid funding or eligible costs for this project. And we've been assured that the folks at State Aid would be, are more than willing to work with us to make sure we can get this project completed. The other component that I wanted to discuss and provide the council a little bit more information is where we're at as far as the finances of this project, because it has gone on for a while. So, passed out this evening before the meeting, is just kind of a summary as far as where we're at for monies that have been, that are owing to Ram, and that's through, one is the retainage, that's where we withhold a certain percentage of every payment, so that the items that we're paying for, so for example, the restoration on Halsted, we've paid for that, but we withheld a portion of that payment so that if there's something, it provides a...
An assurance that...
An assurance, thank you, that the contractor will come back and do that work. So, that's the retainage component. Another is pay voucher ten, which is in a draft form that we can, that we've provided with the contractor, and that's mostly due to the adjusted cost of the tops. So, that's another item that would be owed to Ram. Again, I say it's draft because the contractor has not signed off on the draft pay voucher, and also that the council would have to approve the pay voucher. The third item is cost claims by, costs claimed by Ram. And this was work that was done, that was done what's called a force account. So, it's items that were not included in the line item of the bid but was necessary to perform the work. So, what's happened with this, the cost that Ram has claimed for some of the work that they've done, they did perform the work, but with that, they're required to submit paperwork that identifies not only the title of the individuals working on that work, but the actual names of those people, the type of equipment that was out there. So, they've submitted some of this information, but it's incomplete. So, we're still requesting...
Because we need to verify that this is the actual amount, or that this is, how do you say, a valid amount.
Correct. And it's according to the State Aid requirement.
Right.
So, we've, they've been given the forms, and so, we continue to work on that. The cost claim by Ram, I believe, is high, but I wanted to, I wanted to present the council with a number that, this was, the number here for cost claim by Ram is what their initial submittal was for. So, I think all indicators are that number is going down, but I don't have the final. The second item listed on the handout this evening is liquidated damages. So, the liquidated damages is a portion of the contract where it states per day, it's a penalty, a financial penalty per day that passed the project completion date that the contractor has to pay. So, the contractor's been put on notice twice that liquidated damages are occurring. So, they are aware of this. And in our discussions among staff and council, the legal council, we wanted to take a look at where are we at with that number. So, when I indicate that liquidated damages through today's date are based on WSB's calculations, that means I've taken the substantial completion date, the recommended substantial completion date listed in the council memo of November 27, 2017, discounted the winter as a contractor cannot perform work over the winter months in Minnesota, and came up with the number of days that they could have been working on the project, and came up with that number. So, again, that's something that we've generated.
But why would we discount the winter when they were supposed to have it done? They should have known the clock was gonna continue ticking.
That was...
Regardless of the weather, because they should have had it done November 27th. So, quite honestly, that clock keeps ticking, ticking, ticking.
Well, they have to be able to do the work. So, if you say the clock is ticking, you're correct. It's ticking in theory, but if we'd say, get back out there, and it's December 15th, they're not gonna be able to do it.
But what, what kind of work, we'd have to look at what kind of work had to be done, and could it have been done during certain times of that, of the winter season?
I don't think so. I don't think it could have been done in the winter, Mayor and Council, so...
Okay.
I mean, you have to discount that, so...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but that's not the way liquidated damages are calculated. When, you don't count winter against them. If there are other events, you don't count that. So, I mean, this is probably a pretty conservative, this will be contested.
Right.
This, this is probably a pretty conservative estimate of liquidated damages.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this also does not include when road restrictions are on, correct? Because they can't run, or is that not true?
I went from the road restriction dates.
Yeah, okay. Because you can't, you can't run the heavy equipment out there to do the work without...
You could, because it's accessed by a county road.
No, but there's still road restrictions.
Road restrictions on Halsted itself.
Yeah. So, I mean...
And we can certainly dive deeper into some discussions on liquidated damages.
Sure, okay, yeah.
I wanted to provide that information to the council, to bring the council up to speed with where we've been at with some of these discussions, on where we stand with this contractor, and we can certainly provide some additional information and dive a little deeper at another time. The third set of items included on the handout this evening are what we're estimating for costs for the remaining work. So, we look at the restoration along Halsted and Farm Hill. The contractor did have some material placed along Farm Hill. It's green, but I'm not able to tell if it's a temporary cover or if it's weeds. So, we'll have somebody from our engineering, our environmental compliance group go out and take a look and tell me if it's, but if it's a temporary cover, but I believe it's weeds, so...
That's pretty easy to see.
So, we wanna make sure that we've got all of that work accounted for, some erosion control devices that need either maintenance or removal, those sorts of things, cleaning the culverts. So, there is, it's not a substantial amount of work financial, from a financial perspective, but we wanted the council to be aware, you know, these are the items that we're seeing that remain to be completed, and here's what we're estimating the costs are. And the reason we brought up these three numbers to the council this evening is, we've had a lot of discussion with Finance Director Grimm, to go and take a look at where we're at with the construction budget, to take a look at where we're at for funding for this project, and look at what is the bottom line? What are we looking at for construction costs for this project? And looking at these estimated costs, what's been paid to Ram thus far, potential other monies owed to Ram, we should be within the revised contract amount for the construction, so... I wanted to present that to the council this evening, in consideration of this discussion for, you know, what the council, what direction the council would like to do, if any, as far as exercising some of the council's rights within the contract.
Anybody else wanna weigh in? All right. Let's move on. That's what I say. Just give them their notice. I mean, this has just gone on too long.
We...
Yeah.
You're exactly correct. But I guess the question we have before you is, which way would the council prefer us to move? As Ms. Falski has presented, there's one, which is a defective work seven-day notice, or number two, which is declaration that they're in default, and we can terminate, and that's a 10-day window, I believe.
I guess my question is, I'm looking at Ron here, is perhaps he can give a little legal perspective as to...
What's better, yeah.
Kind of, both accounts of each.
Well, Madam Mayor and Council, you know, the termination of the contract is the cleanest, simplest thing. It's exactly what you expect. The other gives them another shot at it, and then allows us to come back and complete the work, but it doesn't...
And it just drains on.
It doesn't terminate the agreement, I mean...
Okay, I guess, from what I'm thinking about it, is from the financial side of what we looked at here, does either of these options inhibit any of our financial recourse?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the issue is going to be, we, big picture, we owe Ram what, we owe them for the work that they've done, subject to us retaining enough money to complete the work that they haven't done, either after the seven days or after we terminate the contract, and the liquidated damages. So, I mean, and those are, you look at the numbers, you can see that there isn't enough money for everything, and liquidated damages will be something that they'll probably have something to say about. We have put them on notice, as is required by the contract, but usually, that's a subject of dispute. So, again, the, we, I don't think, I think our remedies are the same, but the termination of the contract, which is being recommended, is the cleaner way, in my opinion, to get on with life.
The only comment I'll probably make on the financial side is, depending on how the liquidated damages shakes out, you know, plays a role in whether the project ends up more closer to even or slightly, you know, into the negative, because we've had additional costs as far as, you know, additional engineering costs. Obviously, it's dragging on, dragged on for, you know, years, not just months. I mean, this is, I've been involved in helping with some of these projects for, you know, a long time now, and this is the least responsive contractor I think I've ever, ever seen.
So, the bottom line here, the $44,000 that we would have to pay above and beyond, or to different, either internally or to a different contractor, we would expect to recover that via withholding retainage? Is that...
Are you talking about the $44,000?
Yeah, the $44,000.
Yeah, through that liquidated damages.
Through the liquidated damages or through the retainage?
Well, it all comes out of the same pot. In other words, we would make certain that we held back, I don't wanna use retainage, we would held, we would hold back the 44, because we think we're gonna need to pay that to somebody else, and the 104 for liquidated damages, and then after that, we can start talking about what we might owe them.
And in fact, we would probably withhold a little more than the $44,000, because this is just an estimate, and I think we'd wanna be certain that we're covered, so I would say we'd hold back a little more than the 44.
So, the termination, if we were to go down the route of terminating the contract, would there be any exchange of funds at that time? Or is it simply, we terminate the contract, and we figure out the money later?
Yes, the latter.
Right, yeah. Because we don't even know, cost claim by Ram, we don't even, they haven't filled...
These are estimates.
Yeah, well, they haven't filled out the correct paperwork to do that, and draft pay voucher 10, I mean, and then the retainage through pay voucher, we wouldn't pay that until they give us their last pay voucher.
Yeah, okay.
So, all of that, yeah.
So, it's really kinda two separate decisions.
Right.
Yeah, the only one you potentially would see anytime in the near future would be the draft pay voucher 10, because you'd have to take the 201, less the 104, less the 44, and you're basically about at that...
Right.
$48,000 for draft pay 10, or whatever, so...
Yeah.
Right.
All right. So, I think we should go option two, because that, that's the cleanest and the best, and we've been dealing with this way too long.
And frankly, I can't speak for Ram, but I think they're looking for a hole to crawl out of here. I don't think they wanna do the work, I think they prefer to cancel the contract. I don't know what's gonna happen with liquidated damages, but their non-performance over the last year and a half is pretty telling that, you know, they don't wanna do it anywhere, they're done, so...
Yeah.
By doing this, I think we just...
And who knows? They may not even be paying their vendors, then, who knows?
Well, I don't know if they are or not.
Yeah, we don't know.
But if they want to, doesn't wanna come back, so...
Well, I wonder why.
Yeah.
I wonder why. All right. So, is there a motion to direct staff to provide the contractor the 10-day notice and sever the contract?
Well, I have a quick question. Can we start looking for these projects to be done? I know we have to wait 10 days to do any of them, but we can start figuring out who's gonna do all this stuff, whether it's our...
We've been discussing that, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, right.
We've been discussing that, so...
I'm sure that Public Works might do some of it, and we may have contractors, and Public Works may know of contractors that can do this work effectively and quickly.
So, we kinda know what we're up against, so...
Yeah.
I assume if Public Works were to do it, they would track their time separately?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Double time.
Is that what?
Anyhow, no, absolutely. Because their time is money as well.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Right? Is there a motion? Or do you just need direction?
No.
Take a motion.
Okay. So, is there a motion to direct staff for option two, providing the contractor 10 days notice, as the city's considering a declaration that the contract is in default, and termination of the contract?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, five oh. So, hopefully, we can get this done soon. Okay. So, next we move on to staff reports. City Administrator, Mr. Barone.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, I've got three items, gonna leave the best for last. Pam Whitmore is going to be here on Monday, June 24th. You've probably already been in discussions with Ms. Tabor and have those sessions scheduled, so that'll be the day, and then we'll be having our next meeting four weeks from tonight on July 15th, and that's the date we will convene early. I think, is it four o'clock? I think I've got a hand sign over there, I can count to four, so it's four o'clock on that day, on the July 15th, because it's gonna take a little bit longer to do the, kind of, the feedback from this work that Ms. Whitmore's gonna be doing. And then the last item I have, like I said, the best for last, I'm looking for a little guidance and a little feedback from the city council on ongoing issue, and it's changed slightly today, based on my conversation with Ms. Falski, but, so the topic is the Center Island medians that are on Lotus Drive. So, I got a couple picked. Those are the Center Island medians. So, they're, there's kinda split in half, and it's a little hard to tell, but that separation in the middle is not straight, it's at an angle. So, if you're, Trillium is on the left, and we're looking on Lotus, looking towards the east, towards 44. So, a left turn out of Trillium swings through that little divider there between the two islands, and off they go. Now, these islands, from what I understand, was a compromise back in the day when the project began with the Woodland Cove area, and the neighbors in this Trillium neighborhood were worried that if you line up on Lotus, and the traffic got really long, that they would take a left and cut through their neighborhood to go 44 north. So, this is what was given to the neighbors to appease that particular concern. But, I've got a public works superintendent over there and a police chief down there that absolutely hate these center islands, because they're a mess for them, especially for the public works people to maintain the road. And if you go to one of those other pictures, this is what we're seeing, you know, heavy equipment driving around, you, they can't get the plow by it. I mean, it's not even wide enough for the plow being dropped to drive by it without, you know, doing that kinda thing. That's just from some heavy equipment that drove through. I don't know if you wanna add any comments about that?
Basically, from just even a truck with a trailer cannot make the turn decently, so they actually turned into, the property is the city's right there, where Woodland Forests, they actually had to turn out into the grassed area, and thus, they're just running it off, there's just not enough to make that turn.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
As well, not to extend this any longer than it has to be, but this is the same issue you see with school buses, garbage trucks, fire trucks. If you're coming from the west, and you're gonna take a left into Trillium, you can't do that, because it's just not big enough. So, the only option is to go in the wrong lane and then make your left, which we do if it's an emergency and we have our red lights on. But that's certainly not a good practice. And so, I guess, in my opinion... certainly not a, a good practice. And so, I guess in my opinion, this just isn't practical and what it's trying to deter, I think it's causing more harm than good in my opinion.
So, here's the deal. So, I asked Allison to contact the homeowners association president. I believe he's the president.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Anyway, Dean Johnson, she gave him a call and they still want these things, believe it or not. I didn't think they would because we had one letter writer a couple of months ago that sent me a letter and said, you know, why, you know, I don't want these here.
They're ugly.
But I didn't want to just take the word of one person, so that's why we asked the homeowners association. So, the reason this is kind of coming to a head and I think we can, and like I said, I got some new information today, but they're scheduled to put the final lift on this July eighth and we don't meet until July fifteenth again. So, I, I'd prefer to have these removed and then when they put the, fill it in, then put the final lift, it'll look nice, brand new, um, with the final lift. It won't be, if you wait, we're gonna have to dig these out and it'll be a big patch in that road down the road, down the line. One of the things I'm committed to doing, um, is to meet with the homeowners association. Um, ended up, uh, talking about this with Lisa in our kind of regular pre-council meeting last week and, you know, we're trying to think of something that we could maybe appease the homeowners with and there's kind of nothing we can do. I mean, I thought about the, the park, but that's the one with all the ADA issues. I don't think we got the money right now to do that. Um, there is a trail connection kind of down near the end, um, but the way Three Rivers looks at all these trails, they're looking at big trails and if you're doing kind of trailhead connectors, they're kind of think that's the city's responsibility. So, I don't think we'd get any funding for that. Um, there might be some other things we could do, maybe, um, turn lanes, right in, right out kind of thing. But nonetheless, the, the new information I heard is that the paver contract might be willing to move the, the actual paving of the road till a little later in July. Still doesn't leave us a lot of time, but at least it'll give us a chance to meet again. So, I'm still willing to have that, but I'm looking to see what your thoughts are because I'm listening to the people that, uh, are, are department directors and they're telling me this, these islands are kind of a pain in the ass. And I went out there to look at this with David, uh, a couple of months ago and I wrote that letter to, to the one resident, said, you know, she wanted, why do we have to have these guardrails kind of thing? I thought they're kind of ridiculous. They're so big for that little, small road. And this road has been essentially not widened, but back to its original twenty-four foot width. It used to be overgrown with grass and junk, if I remember correctly. So, I think it's a tight fit. Now, I know they appeased, and it was a previous council that appeased this group of homeowners by doing these Center Islands, but it's not like we have a contract or anything that says we gotta keep them in. Um, and this is a city street, it's not a neighborhood street. I mean, they don't own this, we own this road. So, you know, this is our decision to make, but I was hoping to hear some feedback from you guys on next steps. Like I said, I'm willing to meet with them, but anything, it's a tough spot because kind of gave it to them and now we want to take it away.
It's hard to take away something like that.
Absolutely. I'm hoping they're gonna be understanding and reasonable about the fact that our public safety and public works people, I know, I agree with you, that they're think it's in their best interest to not have those there, but it may not fly with them.
Is there any way you can put a no right turn, um, sign at this, at, at that T there? I mean, can you?
Where would?
No, left, left. That would be no left turn. No left turn at that?
Just take the Center Islands.
Take the Center Islands out and then have a sign that says no left turn?
You, you certainly could. I'm thinking of some other examples. I think there might be one in St. Bonnie similar to that. Um, it would become an enforcement issue.
Right.
Although I, in this case, I think during the construction period isn't a good sample of what's going to happen after all of this construction's done on forty-four and Lotus. I think the reality is that the vast majority of people are not gonna turn and snake through an entire neighborhood to get out to forty-four when they can just drive to a nice, clean intersection and take a left. Um, so, the sign could be there, uh, no doubt about that. I don't think that would cause issues. It's gonna become an enforcement issue, but I don't think there's gonna be enough people doing it that it's gonna matter.
So, um, speaking of going out to the intersection of forty-four, um, when this gets resurfaced, is that going to be striped with either a left or a right turn lane?
At the end?
At the intersection of forty-four?
I have no idea.
I was talking to Mr. Peters about that and he's, and I asked.
I believe it is on the record to have a left and a right turn lane at forty-four.
Okay.
And that's, was my recommendation too, and that was my question, if it could be striped like that. That would also deter people from going through Trillium because if they know they can go out to forty-four and then there's a, a left as well as a right. Most people are gonna be taking a right, um, but that might help. The other thing that we could look at, and I've asked our chief to look into this, um, I found out that there's a new, one of the bills that was passed allows cities to set their own, uh, speed limits on city streets. There may be some caveats or some, some, um, criteria for that, but they're gonna look into it. That might be another option to make Trillium Lane, whatever that is, a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. That might also deter people from going in there. If they know they can go a few hundred feet further and be on a forty mile an hour street versus meandering through, uh, a neighborhood, that might be another option.
Another question I have, and I'll pose this to Allison, um, just approximately, what would it cost to build those today?
The medians?
Yeah.
Hmm. I would guess, I would estimate several thousand dollars.
Like, less than ten or more than ten?
I would say less than ten.
Yeah.
For those, for those medians?
No.
No.
If you had to build them again, okay, here's where I'm going with this. Well, let's just say worst case scenario, okay, we decide, yep, we're gonna take them out. And worst case scenario, all hell breaks loose and we decide, no, we gotta put them back in. What would that cost? That's all I'm asking. Just approximately.
I would say ten thousand dollars. You could probably do a, a poured concrete.
Right.
On top of the asphalt. You would, you would not have to cut it out. We could do a poured in place on top, moment.
Okay.
If we had to do that, is there any way of doing that, those islands with the skirting similar to a roundabout where you, where, where emergency vehicles could easily drive over them?
That, that would certainly be an option and, uh, Administrator Barone and I were talking about that today and, um, because I offered that as, as a suggestion and then I kind of answered my own question in that if an emergency vehicle can drive over it, then so could other vehicles.
Yeah, I'm, the other vehicles just might be a little less, yeah.
It may, it would be certainly more abrupt for a smaller vehicle, but, you know, an SUV or something, a pickup truck would certainly be able to navigate that.
Do we have an idea how many residents would be opposed to moving there?
Well, I know one for sure and he's the homeowners association's, but, you know, that would be one reason to, to meet with him and, and one or two other people I'd hope you bring in to discuss it. But, like I said, I don't feel like I have to bargain for what goes on a city street with neighborhoods, but.
But at, at the same time, rather than find out later that, that we really should've left it in, take it out, I, I think it, it, it just makes sense to take their pulse and talk to them and.
Right. And that, as I said, up until today, I thought my timeline was, uh, July, the week of July, the paving, I think it can be later than that, so, which gives us a little bit more time. I don't want the, uh, neighbors to, to know that because I think they'll just kind of play a waiting game and say, oh, missed the council meeting, I guess, guess they stay, you know, kind of thing. So, uh, but I'm still willing to talk to them about it, but, uh, we'll see what happens. But I think you're right. That would be the purpose of the meeting.
So, the other, the question is if the meeting goes and the people say, oh, we really want to have them left, then do we come back to the council and say, what do you want? Do you want to leave them?
Generally, I don't like to put the council in this tough spot where they're kind of figuring out what I'm supposed to figure out, but I just thought with, like I said, up until today, I thought with this July eight timeline for paving, you know, I'd rather do it now and have a nice, clean road than some chopped up, patched road. So, well, I'm answering my own question here. So, we'll meet with the neighbors, we'll find out what their, as, uh, pulses of them, we'll come back with some. I don't know if it'll, they'll come out or not, but like I said, if Chief falls out his druthers out, they come, same with Gary, so.
Can I make one work on that?
Yeah.
I think it's important as we move forward with this issue. I know it's a difficult one and I'm certainly not opposed to listening to residents. Certainly that's important. I think it's important that our message as the city moving forward is that while this was all done with very good intentions, I don't think it's working the way that we thought it would. It's created all kinds of issues that we didn't foresee, for whatever reason. It just happens. And so, and it's happening, I think, more often than we thought it would happen. And so, that's really, from my perspective, one of the biggest messages. While we want to do something that everyone's in favor of, sometimes that's not possible and it's causing more damage and harm than, than it's preventing.
You know, when you approve, yep, and when you approve a project with a thousand something units, and that's why these people essentially panicked, said, oh, man, I can't imagine the traffic we're gonna get through our neighborhood. Well, well, they got three hundred homes there and it's gonna be ten more years before it's built out. So, you know, it's, it might get worse, but I still don't see how, I mean, that's a long ways down to forty-four. I can't imagine there'd be a string of cars that long that are gonna opt to go through Trillium instead of waiting at, uh, forty-four. I just don't, but that's me.
There's one thing I'll add. So, after our discussion, I did drive down here and look.
Yeah.
Um, now, did I advocate this? But if I were driving up to this and I saw a car, line of cars all the way down to forty-four wanting to make a left-hand turn, and I was coming up to this, I'd probably just hop over, go about twenty-five feet in the wrong lane and take a left, which we, that's what you're, you're doing now anyhow for an emergency situation. But I don't think this, if the traffic's that bad, I think people are gonna do a quick calculation and go, I'm gonna take the risk, take a left in the wrong lane and go for it.
Right. And that's exactly my concern as well, is that it creates a more unsafe situation by, because people are gonna do that rather than just turn normally. Or they're gonna go into the ditch, as you can see in the, the tire marks there, which is right in front of the wellhouse.
Right. Or they'll go past it, do your turn and come back.
They're already, they're already doing that. If you sit out there and watch traffic coming in and out, they're either coming, you know, in from this angle and going the wrong way to turn in, or as they're coming out, they're not even going through these Center Islands. They're turning it on, coming traffic and shoot that way. They're already doing that.
Oh, that's not good.
We sent her for, uh, uh, locate, uh, meeting and watched, what, it was early morning, it was eight o'clock, watched a dozen cars come both ways doing the same thing. So, I mean, it's, it's still neighborhood doing it.
If it was a hundred feet longer, they'd probably be less inclined to do that, but it's short enough where you can scoot over there and kind of defeat the whole purpose without.
So, well, we'll work on it and get back to you, but.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Gee, thanks. That didn't seem too heartfelt, but I appreciate it. That's all I have.
All right. Allison?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to provide you an update with where we're at with a couple of projects. Tuxedo Enchanted, the contractor, Valley Paving, had scheduled their restoration subcontractor to be out there today. Uh, this afternoon, I talked to the inspector and the subcontractor did not show up. So.
Do we have to issue another?
Yes. So, um, Valley Paving was notified that their subcontractor did not show up and so we will continue to be on, on top of that as much as we can to keep that process moving along. Um, and then second, I wanted to provide the council with a quick update with regards to the two thousand nineteen project. Um, we've been working with the contractor to get all the paperwork necessary and anticipate we'll be sending out a notice to proceed this week. The contractor has supplied a preliminary schedule for the work. Um, they would start up in the reclamation area near the end of June and that would take approximately one month to complete, uh, starting in the Millin overlay area, uh, the week after the fourth. Um, that would be approximately three weeks. Then mid-July, uh, get started on Ingersoll. That would take approximately two weeks to complete. And then start at City Hall, uh, here at early August and that would be approximately two weeks. So, the schedule has been shared with the communications folks here at City Hall so that we can keep residents apprised of the, the proposed schedule. And again, weather's always a factor on these. Um, things change and as we see schedules change, we will do our best to communicate that to the residents and staff.
Um, Ingersoll, one of the residents that was here asked for a horse, um, something, horse path or something.
They asked that, um, the, um, shoulder be, not be paved, that it be gravel or, or something other than pavement because of horses.
The shoulder down the hill is already, uh, rock for a ditch because there's so much water runoff. You see it's so much erosion, so it's already riprap all the way down. And so if you pave the twenty-four feet, you're basically gonna have the same situation that we had on twenty, uh, on Green Park Road, twenty-nine to twenty-six. We just keep watching all. That's why we did what we did out there, right?
Oh, okay.
There's just no.
They couldn't ride a horse on the shoulder anyway?
No, not right now. We don't, so.
And how many feet? We're talking two hundred feet?
Roughly two hundred to, we had, we had a setup for two hundred fifty maximum. We want to get down to the bottom of the hill to, so we can do ice control.
Yeah.
And then just, they can say for the riders, that's six of our, that's a very dangerous precaution.
Yeah, right. So, basically the horses are just gonna have to ride two hundred fifty feet on the asphalt.
I just remember that conversation. So, I was just wondering if that's the situation. I understand. I just wanted to bring it back up if it wasn't the plan.
And I'll have to, I, my recollection was we were, when we were talking about future improvements to Ingersoll, but we can certainly take a look and see what we, what would need to be done to accommodate that. We certainly have some time.
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Peters is saying that there's big gullies on the side, on both sides?
On, for sure, the east side is where, the other side has a, uh, line of, of trees already.
Okay.
And, you know, and it just drops off. There's not a lot of them here either.
Yeah. So.
Versus you can walk on pavement, sorry, they can't.
Right. They may have to for that short distance.
I understand, but they can walk on pavement.
Okay.
That was all I have from the council this evening, current update.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then, uh, Ms. Tabor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, uh, give a report on our fourth annual bus tour. We had forty-eight people on the bus, so we had a full bus for the fourth year in a row. Thankfully, the rain dissipated just before we got on the bus, which was fantastic. We ended up with what felt like fall weather and was very well received by our riders. So, I just want to take a moment to thank city staff who participated in planning and participated on the ride, the residents who came out, our council members who came out. Um, it was really interesting this year to see that our demographic took a pretty significant shift. So, we not only saw a younger average age on the bus tour this year, but significantly more newer residents. We even had a couple of residents who, um, a couple of sets of residents who came out who are building homes, who took the bus tour just to get a better sense of the community that they were joining. So, that was really exciting to see and we got really good feedback, um, from the new riders and from those who have returned year after year. So, it was a very good event and it went very well. So, thank you to everyone who participated.
Thank you. Okay.
That's all I have.
Any other staff? All right. Um, so we'll move on to council reports. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Ms. Bruce.
I just attended the park commission meeting on the eleventh and we discussed, uh, retreat drive parcel and that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Chumperlin?
Will be attending the Pioneer Sarah Creek watershed on Thursday, the twentieth.
Okay.
So, I attended the, uh, LMCD meeting last week. Um, we approved, approved the new charter boat operator on the lake, or, I guess, we directed staff to prepare resolution for that. We also directed staff to prepare a resolution for a variance for a dock in the interest as well.
Do you know whatever happened to the bill that was being floated that?
Um, I don't, um, per se, but I suspect it did not pass. Otherwise, we probably would have heard.
Okay.
But that's speculation on my part.
I, I did read about it. It said that, um, the bill was to draw the line at the high watermark and that's what passed. I'm not sure if it was a bill that was passing or not passing, but that's what they decided was, um, their authority stops at the high water line.
I don't think that was signed into law though.
I read that the legislature passed the bill.
Well, we'll, we can find out. I'm just curious, yeah.
I read it yesterday.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right.
My? Uh, WCC meeting was on the thirteenth. It was at Surfside Depot Park, newly modeled. They do events there. Uh, we reviewed survey, uh, they handed out surveys to all the members, um, and we just went through all the results from that. They're looking at partnering with, um, surrounding chambers on various events and activities. Um, and most of the members did agree with that, so they're looking into it. Um, they're looking for volunteers for their usual dog days, uh, tree lighting, polar plunge, and the football tail. and the football tailgating. Anybody interested? The bus tour was fabulous, and I have to thank Cassandra as well, being very humble over there, did not say how much she worked on this. It was fabulous, and yes, a lot of new people. There was even somebody in front of me that was from St. Bonnie, and she was on the train, or on the train, on the bus, and enjoyed it as well. And I attended the personnel committee on the 11th.
Okay. Yep, also attended the personnel committee meeting, and then also attended the Gillespie Board Meeting. I did bring the contract with me, and we discussed the contract. Most of the board members that are there currently were not there when the contract was signed. I wanted to make them aware that we are now in our eighth year, and there's two more years to come, so just wanted to make them aware of that and also kind of review it with them, which we did. And based on that, the monthly financials are going to be sent, if you don't already get them, to each city finance director, so you should be getting those on a monthly basis. And then we're also gonna be sending out the year-end statements at the end of the year, also to the finance directors, and offering an opportunity for a meeting if you wish. The other thing that we talked about is an audit, because an audit hasn't been done for over 10 years. What we decided, and I had checked on that a little bit, and talked to some auditors, it would cost quite a bit to do a full-blown audit. And so we gave direction to the finance committee that they should look into doing a review, which is less expensive, but could also be a good venue for them and a good opportunity for kind of a transparency thing, too. So they have been directed to look into a review, whether that'll be done imminently or soon, or whether it should be done at the end of their fiscal year, which would be end of December. So it might be done like in January, but nonetheless, it will be done within the next six to seven months. I also attended the Northwest League. Our speakers were from the metro cities, and the change for the LGA formula did not pass. That was one that Jerry Hirtos had proposed. It did not pass, but they felt that it would be brought up again next year, and hopefully it will be, and hopefully next year it will be passed. Next year is also a bonding year, and we should really talk to Representative Hirtos as well as Senator Osmek regarding our water tower project to see if there might be some state funding available, and if they couldn't add that into the bonding bill. And then also, the other thing that we talked about is that the tax exempt bill for city projects on their, not on labor, but on materials. Currently, there is an option to do that, but to apply for the tax rebate, it would be a tax rebate, is just very time-consuming and very cumbersome. So the, Metro Cities has been trying to work on a new bill that would make it less cumbersome and a lot easier to apply for a tax rebate, because we're tax exempt. Cities are tax exempt.
Are you talking about sales tax?
Yeah, sales tax. So we're tax exempt, but when it comes to paying for materials on projects, in order to get that exemption, we have to apply retroactively, and there's a lot of paperwork to go through and a lot of time, and sometimes really not worth it. So they're looking, they're hoping to get a bill passed next year that would make it a lot easier for cities to apply for this tax, sales tax exemption, which would.
Yeah, 'cause I know we did on the water treatment plants, we did coordinate with SEDH, so that was a large enough project to get those rebates back.
Right, and so we should do that for this water tower, for the water tower project. I'm just hoping that it'll be less time-consuming and less costly for us to do that. And so then, that's all I have. I have received a number of different emails from residents regarding junk properties, and especially the one up the road. So I'd like to have a discussion on junk properties sooner than later. So, and I've talked to Chief Falls, too, about some options, and if he could check into those with our neighboring cities as to how they're handling that, I'd be interested in finding out. So, that's all I have. So with that, we are complete with our agenda, except with our closed session. So what we're going to do is we're gonna go into closed session, and then afterwards, when we come out of closed session, we're simply going to be adjourning the meetings. So with that, do I have a motion to go into closed session? This would be attorney-client privileges pursuant to Minnesota statute section 13D.05 regarding threatened short-term rental ordinance litigation.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and second by Ms. Bruce. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, we are now in closed session.